Thank you so much. Good evening. This open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement to the open meeting law to have all members in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Now, obviously, we are in kind of a hybrid setup here where we are in the Room 124 here at Town Hall, but all of those who are joining us tonight will be doing so remotely. With that, will everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, especially to those who joined us and said the Pledge of Allegiance virtually. We do appreciate that. Blythe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Yes, so tonight we have COVID-19 updates followed by public comment, then a meeting with the Norfolk Girl Scout Troop to discuss collaboration with them on community projects. The action items tonight include approval of a charge to the Fire Station Building Committee to consider an abatement of a water bill for Boyd's Crossing, to consider authorizing the Chair to execute a state grant application for IT cybersecurity initiatives. And our discussion items include a presentation by the Fire Chief on future capital needs of the Fire Department, review of the FY '21 budget year-to-date through December 31st, as well as a transfer station to discuss website postings of board correspondents, town administrator updates. There are three warrants to be approved and I believe two sets of minutes.
Thank you very much, Blythe. Would you mind taking us through our COVID-19 updates to start?
Yes, so this past week, we continued unfortunately to see an increase in cases, went up 61 from Thursday to the Thursday. It's up more than the week before. I did notice today overall the state's trend is starting to come down, so hopefully our numbers will start to reflect that soon as well. We are at this point in a holding pattern waiting to see what legislation, if a new round of stimulus comes from the federal government with regard to funding. As I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we're close to completing use of the monies that we've been allocated so far, of course, with ongoing costs coming, so waiting for news on that to see what that looks like and what it means. Our first responder shots are done, first round, very excited.
That's awesome.
Yep, all took place at the police station last week, 60 people?
Yes.
So very, very grateful that that's done and everybody is better protected. That's really important. And I think the question that we get asked the most is, well, okay, I'm in Phase Two or Phase Three. When can I get a shot? Where am I going to get it? What's it mean? And at this point, I wish I had clear answers for that, but we don't yet. I think if any of you watched the news or heard any of the Governor's updates, there's a couple of issues going on. It's vaccine coming from the federal government on a predictable schedule, as well as the state really needing to set up all the various sites that are going to happen. What I think I hear happening is that most people will get their shots in a variety of ways, through large locations like Gillette Stadium, perhaps from pharmacies, doctors' offices, and maybe other sites. But we don't have any clarity yet of what to tell people and when it will start. So Chief, do you know any more about that that I haven't mentioned?
We are, I'm in the same boat as you. I talk to Alyssa pretty regularly now and with our public health representatives just trying to make sure we stay on top of it and try to accommodate, you know, what we can and make sure we get the doses we can to, you know, keep the process rolling and get shots in people's arms.
Sure, so stay tuned. As soon as we know more details, we will absolutely share them as widely as possible.
Thanks, Blythe. I know from the split of the prison and the community standpoint, with the last week, we've had some interesting challenges with being able to get some reliable data to be able to identify that in a clear fashion. Right now, our best guess based on testing results is about half of it is sourced from the prison and half of it is sourced from the community, so not really great on either front with numbers increasing week over week, so we do have to remain diligent in our mitigation methods for sure. Cece, Anita, any questions for Blythe related to COVID-19?
No.
All right, thank you very much, Blythe. Our next item this evening is our public comment period. This is the point in which anybody who is in attendance this evening can take the mic and speak for around three minutes about anything pertaining to the scope of the Select Board or the Town Administrator. If you do have something that you'd like to share this evening, we ask that you please use the raise hand function at this time, which can be found by clicking the Participants icon at the bottom of your screen. I'll give everybody a second. If you can't find that raise hand button, feel free to wave furiously at your camera, yell, knock it over, whatever you want to do. It looks like we do have a person who would like to share this evening from an iPod Touch. I don't think that's your name, but if it is, it's not very unique. I'm going to unmute you, and if you could just say your name and your address, you can go right ahead.
Um, so my name is Misha and I'm, and my address is Brett's Farm Road, Norfolk, Massachusetts.
How are you doing tonight? Go right ahead.
Um, so Girl Scout Troop, we are planning to do, to plant herbs, um, for Girl Scouts, and we send away posters. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, one good thing about the herbs that we could possibly do for our community would be, um, that if we, that if we, if we made like flowers or whatever, then, um, that could help animals and other, and if people want to buy like herbs, um, for like, for use, then they could just buy them and it'll probably help the community.
Well, that was fantastic. Thank you so much. You did jump ahead in our agenda. We are very excited for you and your fellow troopmates to present to us, but thank you so much for showing us that fantastic poster. And as somebody who is quite excited for fresh herbs, I do appreciate it. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything for public comment this evening before we get into our Girl Scout Troop presentation? I am not seeing any hands at this time, so with that, we will move to the agenda item that we're all looking forward to tonight, which is a meeting with the Norfolk Girl Scout Troop to discuss collaboration on community projects. Blythe, would you like to give us a little bit of background here before we get into the presentation?
Yes, so you received a copy of the presentation that the Girl Scouts will be making tonight. They're interested in talking with you about sustainable raised garden beds for just what the young lady just told us about. I also think they're here just to talk about collaboration in general. It's one of the Board's priorities to try and find ways to work with Girl Scouts and then hopefully Boy Scouts in the community, so interested in starting that dialogue.
Fantastic. Thank you, Blythe. And I do believe this was listed as one of our annual goals for 2021.
Exactly, that's what I just said, yep.
So thank you, Girl Scouts, for helping us keep on track with our goals. With that, I'll toss it over to Jen Nguyen. Hello, how are you doing tonight?
Hi, thank you Select Board for having us and Blythe and Chief Kinney. We are excited to be here. We have a presentation tonight for you and I'm going to share my screen and I will put it on present mode. We have an order, girls, correct? We practice our order of speaking, so let's make sure I will introduce you when it's time to speak. Can everybody see the screen right now? Thumbs up if you can see it. All right, so we are Girl Scout Troop 79048 and we are working on our Bronze Award project. Charlotte and Lilly, do you want to talk a little bit about it? Read the slide.
Well, um, so as you already know, we are Girl Scout Troop 79048 and we are working towards our Bronze Award project.
Lilly?
Um, we would like to build two sustainable raised bed planters.
This is why we're doing this and what is a Girl Scout Bronze Award? And Jillian and Lila will talk about this slide.
We are Girl Scout Troop 79048. We have been together since kindergarten and are now in fifth grade. As a junior Girl Scouts, we apply for a prestigious Girl Scout Bronze Award.
There are three awards in the Girl Scout according to your level. Bronze grades four through five, Silver grades six through eight, and Gold, high school. Our role is to work towards sustainable, long-term project for the community by the end of June 2021.
Okay, this is details of the project that the troop will be fundraising for. We're not asking the town for any of this, one through four, and this slide is Ellie.
Details of the project. Our troop will be fundraising for one to two elevated self-watering cedar planters, two by eight, $455 each, one to two coverings, $100 each, composted fertilized soil for the beds, $75 to $125, three to four herb plants, price to be determined, and community accessible space for residents to come and pick free herbs for their cooking.
Great. So how and why in this slide will be discussed by Nora and Misha?
We are all selling Girl Scout cookies at $5 a box. And our troops' $1 profit will go towards the project and the rest of the library seeds, bank to start growing the herbs, plants this spring for June planting. We are thinking of rosemary, thyme, and basil. This would be a free herb garden for the community.
Misha?
We would monitor the garden once a week in the summer and the self-watering basins at the bottom of the planter. We chose cedar wood as a longstanding wood. We chose mostly perennials for sustainability. We chose basil as an annual because it is delicious and easy to grow.
All right, Kaia? Kaia?
Community, what are we looking for? Community space, a place for residents to go and pick their herbs for cooking.
Great. Okay, so how we would let the community know about the free herb garden? We would advertise, we would have posters in town buildings, we would do a PSA through NCTV, and we would have Facebook groups, of course, parents doing the posting. So here are some sample advertising. Oh, Charlotte, sorry, I took your, go ahead, Charlotte, tell us about this last slide.
So sample advertising with our logo and also a simple question and answer time. Down below, you can see some advertising that we've worked on and the logo that we are using.
Okay, and at this time, I'd like to invite any of my Girl Scouts that would like to just hold up their poster. You saw Kaia's already, Kaia, do you want to hold it up? That's a sample of her advertising. I'm going to go to Lila next. Lila, would you hold up yours if you'd like to? We can come back to Lila. Pippa, you, uh, wait, you didn't have one. Charlotte, do you have one to hold up? No, not yet. Ellie? Lilly? All right, well, I think we saw all of the, some of the posters that we would be using to advertise. And we're happy to take any questions right now for you.
Well, thank you very much, Jen, and thank you Ellie, Pippa, Jillian, Charlotte, Misha, Leela, Lilly, Kaia, Nora, and Peyton. And we do appreciate you guys jumping on and speaking in a public forum like this. I know that's scary for most adults, so it's really incredible you guys were able to do that. Thank you for that. At this time, I'll open it up to the rest of the Board if they have any questions or comments for the girls. Cece?
No, no.
Anita?
Hi. It's been a long time since I seen you. How are you all? You good? One of the things, excellent. I love the nonverbal communication, excellent. One of the things I know, and it may or may not work out, but I know Mrs. Balfour at HLD was looking to have some raised beds there, so that would be a good opportunity for you to think about if you're looking for a location. I know she's talked about that in the past, so she would be a good person to check in on to see if you're looking for space. Thank you for doing this. Good work.
Thank you.
Blythe, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Uh, one, one suggestion and one question.
Sure.
I love that about HOD, that sounds perfect. The suggestion is talk, I would suggest you talk to the Public Works Department about the compost soil. We do compost material there. We sell it for much less than you can buy it at a commercial location, so that might make your project a little more affordable and that would be great. So think, so check with Director Crane about that. And then my question was, how do you think you'll be able to keep this going in future years? Are you going to hand it off to the next younger troop? Or how do we keep it going past this summer is my question.
Jen, did you have any insight or we're not made it to that stage yet?
Girls, remember we talked about, what, why did we go for the more expensive planter? What does it have at the bottom of it that would be sustainable?
Self-water, like, yeah, it holds water and then it will like self-water.
Right, and this is something, do we want to add to it over the years? And are we going for eventually our Gold Award, girls? Anybody?
We are kind of planning to this.
Say that again, Charlotte?
We are kind of adding to, we are kind of planning to add on to this and really keep it going.
Yeah, and one of the ways we will keep it going, and then we, um, we have not discussed like in five years what to do, but we can definitely discuss that at our next troop meeting. But I like the idea of passing it on to another troop or the garden club.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I think that does it for our questions. Thank you so much once again for joining us. And if you guys do have any additional projects or future things that you want to look into and you think that we could be of any assistance whatsoever, please feel free to reach out, feel free to jump on another call with us. It's much more interesting than the rest of the stuff we're going to talk about today. No offense, Chief Kinney. Everybody have a good night. Thank you so much again.
Great job, girls. Proud of you.
Nice job.
Bye.
I wish you could see me smile.
Around the whole club.
All right. Well, it's unfortunate that we got that bright spot out bright and early here with our agenda.
Are you trying to suggest that the Chief is not also?
I already apologized to him. I don't think he'd even argue with that at this point. Come on.
That's definitely a lot easier.
It's hard to top.
That'll bring us to our next item this evening, which is to please consider approval of a charge to the Fire Station Building Committee. Blythe, would you mind giving us a Scotia background?
Yes, so we discussed this at the last meeting. One of the questions from Anita was, have you run it past the staff who participated with the police station project? So we did that, and as a result, there are some edits to this version that we'd like you to consider approving tonight. And there, I gave you the tracks changes version, so hopefully it's easier to follow. And let's just give you the highlights of what's different. After a bunch of discussion, it was, it was recommended that the ex-officio members in the first draft of the Chief and myself or my position become full members. And I wanted to just go into that for a second. We scripted this whole committee to be a grouping of hopefully subject matter experts about what they bring to the project. And I think it's important for there to be, you know, balanced to the project, to have a subject matter expert and what a fire department needs. And then for the town administrator position, someone who represents the rest of staff about whether it's a procurement question or it's a finance question or it's a building question. So that that, want to make sure they had an equal voice. And so a seven-member committee with, with two staff people filling that role. Secondly, we, I thought it was a good thing to point out that this committee ought to self-determine one of their members to be a liaison to other committees because communication maybe hasn't always been as even as it could be in making sure that they're reaching out and talking with the planning board if there's a site plan that needs to be approved or something else, conservation, maybe there's an impact that they need to know about to keep the project moving smoothly if everybody's understanding and on the same page about those details. We wanted to make sure that the committee is reminded that they should review a state manual about public buildings, so the people that would come from the community more than likely have never been involved in a, in a public building. And so there's a great manual that they should be reviewing. Just make sure that they're going to rely on us to know a lot of those things for them, but if they've all had a chance to, you know, read it themselves, hopefully they'll also be better up to speed. And then last thing is, um, one of the aspects that is important today is green communities and sustainable materials, that making sure that as they go through the vetting of what to do with this building, they look at it. It's great to say you want to be sustainable, but there's a cost. And so they should just take the time to make sure they've thought about, given that thoughtful consideration, whether they decide to or they don't, it's up to the, up to the town overall, but something that they should look at. There's a couple other small ones, but those are the high points.
Perfect. Thank you, Blythe. I think from my perspective, you know, we talked about the concerns related to having the members from Town Hall be voting members initially. You know, we wanted to go with a different model that was more focused on the respective experience within people in town who would volunteer. However, I understand where you're coming from and I agree. You know, having Chief Kinney with his expertise with fire operations and having your expertise be municipal government and finance, I think having those voices on that committee, being able to say those things and be able to vote appropriately will assist in bridging that understanding gap in some cases. Further, there are five other members on the committee, so it's not like we're, you know, injecting a voting majority by doing something like this, which can be perceived incorrectly. So, yeah, where you're coming from and completely agree.
Those other staff people will play a role, but it's a different role. They're going to be supporting this with whatever, you know, their level, area of expertise is. The committee will be able to rely on them, but it's for information and for feedback and guidance, not, not more.
Perfect. I did get one question from a resident earlier this afternoon. It was a very good question. They asked, well, what happens if we don't get people to volunteer? I mean, we still have to have the committee, we still have to have the fire station, but what happens if we can't find people? And my first reaction to that was, well, I think at that point, we would poll our existing boards and committees in town who have exposure to many of these areas of expertise and see if they could fill out the committee wherever there may be some gaps. Do we see or anticipate any issues with that or had a different idea about what would happen if our recruitment efforts weren't as effective?
Well, this is a charge determined by this board. So if you, if there was a reason why you felt it needed to be adjusted at some point, it's simple meeting like this to decide what it's going to be. I would ask, I would enroll our other board members from all other boards, say, hey, do you know any architects, engineers? You know, lawyers, accountants, whatever they are, that might be interested? You know, just can't rely on just three people's, you know, knowledge of everybody in town and, and a Facebook post to have done a good advertising campaign. So if they may know of other people who might be interested, just cast the net as wide as possible to start with. And then if we don't get those particular disciplines, then I think we'll have to regroup and say, are there other people willing to serve that, you know, maybe they're not experts in some areas, but they have a burning desire to volunteer and can commit to what's going to be a couple-year project?
Yeah, perfect, good. Thank you. Questions? Anita?
No, I, I like the collaboration on the
No, I, I like the collaboration on the, and the changes seem good, so don't have any comments.
None whatsoever?
None. Zero. Also, my watch just told me I have to breathe.
That's important.
Right?
Steve Kinney, anything you'd like to add?
You know, I'm looking forward to the process. I, you know, in helping, you know, trying to research and develop the charge, you know, I was informed and learned a lot. And I think having a diverse group with some subject matter experts is going to be important and be very beneficial to the town. And I think having the committee is also going to be very beneficial to having a very open and transparent process, you know, so that we can keep you all informed and keep the town informed as to the progress and the reasons why things are being implemented the way they are.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to anybody who is in attendance this evening. If you have any questions related to our current agenda item regarding the Fire Station Committee charge, please use the raise hand function at this time. And Mr. Haddad, just please make sure that you say your name and address first, sir.
Ed Haddad, 138 Red Maple Run. As I said, I, I think what, what Blythe outlined is, is fine. It's, it's a good start to get this committee going. I just would like to recommend that if after you get all your members in, and if you don't find at least a minimum of financial and legal support on that committee, that you ensure that there's some ex officio finance and legal support for the committee. And I think the town has that anyway through their, their own relationships, but I think that should be standardized, that there has to be at least some financial and legal support, whether on the committee directly or at least ex officio through some kind of advisory role.
That makes sense. Thank you, Ed. Blythe, any thoughts to that point, or note taken?
Note taken.
Gotcha. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
I'll open it up. If anybody else has any questions or comments on our current agenda item, please feel free to use the raise hand function at this time. I am not seeing any hands at this time, so I will move that the board approve the charge to the Fire Station Building Committee and advertise to recruit members who seek to be appointed.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it is unanimous. Thank you very much, Blythe. Thank you, Chief Kinney. I can't really express how excited we are to get this thing moving. Our next item this evening is to please consider an abatement of a water bill for Boyd's Crossing Powerhead LLC. Blythe, what do we have on this one?
Sure. These don't come up very often, but this is a simple clerical error where two different properties, the, the information was transposed in the billing system, so one got overcharged, one got undercharged. This, this address at, at 11 Boyd's Cross, excuse me, 4 Boyd's Crossing was overbilled by $669.56. So, because the board is officially the water commissioners for the town, we're asking you for your approval to officially abate that and return those funds to that owner. And we correctly billed the other owner who was underbilled.
Thank you, Blythe. I think in my three years here, I've seen one water abatement request come before the board outside of this, so it is very rare.
It's exciting times.
I don't have any questions. Cece?
No, I'm just so excited, but other than excited, no, no question.
Thank you for containing your excitement.
I'm not doing a really good job of it, but I'm trying.
I would move that the board approve an abatement of a water bill for Boyd's Crossing Powerhead LLC PM in the amount of $669.56.
Second.
Hearing a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it is unanimous. Thank you. Our next item this evening is to please consider authorizing the chair to execute a state grant application for IT cybersecurity initiatives. Blythe, please.
Yes, so the state has come out with a cybersecurity suite of grant programs. There are three programs that we'd like to immediately apply for two of them. We'd like to apply for the cybersecurity awareness training program and the health check this year. And we're interested in doing the IT health check overall in a future year, just a matter of workload and timing. We, at least on the town side, have not had a program to regularly remind people to be careful about phishing scams or other sorts of things, and we need to do more in that area. So, we were starting to work on putting some funds in next year's budget. When this hit the in-basket, and we're like, ha, here's a chance to at least get going on that. Not sure how robust it is, but it's a chance to get some training underway. So we reached out to Norfolk Schools as well, because they can be a part of it. They want to have 12 people participate. On the town side, we're going to include everybody with a Norfolk MA.us address, so all of us in this room, 105 people altogether. So, that requires the electronic signature, if you will, of the chairman of the board, in our case, is the town, so that's why it's on the agenda. And then separately, we're also going to sign up to have the cybersecurity health check done. That's done by an outside firm contracted for, by the state. Both are, in a sense. So we, these are due the end of January, so we'd like your approval so we can apply. There's no out-of-pocket cost to the town to do it, so another good reason to do it and be better prepared. I mean, we've had, you've probably read of an incident in a town near us a couple months ago. We want to make sure we're avoiding those sorts of things. So, whether this is a long-term project or not, we want to start with this and then work towards just continually making sure people are trained and aware and avoiding that risk.
Thank you, Blythe. And just to put that into relative scale, I believe that that incident ended up in a $500,000 loss. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, very important for us to stay on top of this. I don't have any further questions. Anita?
Well, I was just wondering if the, the delaying of the IT health check, if there's no cost to it, is that just have to do with bandwidth?
Yeah.
And...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Cece, any questions?
No.
All right. So with that, I would move the board to authorize the chair to execute an application for state grant-funded IT cybersecurity initiatives.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next up, please discuss a presentation by the fire department on future capital needs. Now, Chief Kinney, we do apologize that you're being forced to follow up that incredible level of comprehensive Girl Scout glory. We are confident that you have something that is just as good for us, so take it away, sir.
I think next time, you should have some of the firefighters come in and each read one of the slides.
Set it up.
Just to kind of get the same feeling.
I don't think their smiles are as cute as...
Fair point.
Especially at 7:30 and 5:00.
All right. Thank you for having, having me. Happy to discuss some of the capital needs here of the Norfolk Fire Department. So as, as the mission of the Norfolk Fire Department is to provide professional and innovative emergency and support services to the citizens of the town of Norfolk and the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, District 4, through prevention, preparedness, response, and mitigation. The capital improvement plan is a critical component of our service delivery model, and the importance of properly equipped and maintained apparatus and facilities cannot be overstated. So, I have this kind of divided up into sections. So, from the apparatus standpoint, this is our primary fire suppression fleet. The average age of our primary fire suppression fleet is 21 years, 21 and a quarter years old. Ideally, we'd like to see that number be below 20, especially being that NFPA recommendations are that once an apparatus reaches 20 years of age, it should be moved to reserve status or replaced. So we have these four vehicles of, we have two that are within their 20-year service life, and we have two that have exceeded that. I do want to point out that because of the efforts of the firefighters and personnel in the fire department, as well as our DPW and the mechanic staff, our fleet is, is very well-maintained and serving us well and continues to, to serve us. And I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. And I wanted to make sure that you are aware and that the citizens are aware that the personnel here and the staff at the DPW, that they treat these things like they're children. They take really good care of them. You know, we're getting a lot of years of service out of our vehicles, and, you know, the care and, you know, just the detail that's put into them is, is second to none, and I'm very appreciative of my personnel, as well as the DPW staff that, that work on these every day.
How old is the tanker chief?
The tanker is 32 years old, and we'll get into more...
I knew that was the oldest of the old ladies.
Yes. Yes. And we'll, we'll get in, I have some more detailed slides coming up that will cover some of that. So, the first slide just covered apparatus. These are items of equipment that are coming up on service life ends. You know, our jaws of life, cardiac monitors, automated CPR devices. We'll get into detail more of those in a few later slides. And then the big one, which we just had the charge approved for, which is very exciting, the fire station. So, the first vehicle that we are talking about is our Tank One, which is a 1989 GMC commercial chassis. It's a water tender, our tanker, remains in frontline service after 32 years. This, this apparatus will be a top priority to be replaced. It has served the time, served the town very well, and is 12 years past its NFPA recommended maximum service life. We use Tank One for brush fires and all of the fires in the areas of town that don't have readily available municipal water. So we have a few neighborhoods, actually several neighborhoods in town where accessibility to fire hydrants exceeds 1,000 feet. And in those cases, we use tanker shuttles, and we use Tank One as our rolling fire hydrant, if you will, in those areas. So, one of the biggest things about, about Tank One, and the reason, you know, it's on a high priority to be replaced, is it was built in 1989. That was prior to a major revision in NFPA 1901 standard, which covers a lot of safety features and safety components that apparatus need to have, from the braking systems to the weight ratings, to the electrical components and systems. Obviously, you know, with this apparatus being 32 years old, there's a lot of those things that are antiquated. We discussed and looked into the possibility of refurbishment, and with the significant age of this truck, that would be a cost-prohibitive investment. It really wouldn't provide us any value or return on investment if we were to put money into refurbishing. So, the cost of this project would be around $800,000. Now, the reason that number is higher is, we'll get into this a little more too, is that what we aim to do, and one of the things that I aim to do, is to reduce our fleet size, which would, again, then reduce our capital cost. And we will look at that and get into more detail of that in a later slide. The other piece of this is, while that project is 800,000, we have applied for a AFG grant last year. We were denied. We are revising that and reapplying this year, and hope to get a more favorable response and get at least half of that funding from the federal government through a FEMA grant. That's our objective. We're really working on that. We did do some investigating to see which would, how it would be most advantageous, and we're going to reapply for another tank truck this year, and, you know, do some edits and take some of the advice that the grant advisors have, have, you know, given us, and what we've learned through some of the grant writing seminars that Chief Pete and I have attended, and we'll make those adjustments accordingly. Hopefully we'll have a more favorable response. Ladder one is the next unit. And again, ladder one is a 1996 aerial. It remains in frontline service after 25 years. Again, it's another apparatus that should be of high priority. You know, we use our aerial device to respond to all structural responses in town. Obviously, the aerial provides access to roofs, upper floors, and occupancies, and helps us to perform fire ground operations more efficiently. Again, this unit, because of its age, is equipped with antiquated technology as well. The hydraulic systems, the balancing systems, and hydraulic systems on the aerial are antiquated. They were cutting-edge at the time of its manufacture, but with it being 25 years old, there's been significant advances in, in safety and, and engineering that now, you know, make this antiquated. This is a significant investment. You know, it's a, it's a big number. The cost of a replacement would be 1.3 million. And one of the big reasons that we're looking at reducing the fleet is, in my short time here, I've kind of evaluated our response model, which is, which is effective and efficient, but I think it needs to be updated. And one of the updates is, you know, based on how we currently respond with our apparatus, and looking at the apparatus that is getting out the door to our structural responses, it is very rare to be able to get all four of our apparatus on the road for one call. So, we do get three almost every single time. So with that being said, I want to take advantage of technology, take advantage of engineering and modern technology, and have the ladder not just be a straight ladder. Currently, our ladder truck is just that. It is a ladder truck. It carries, it carries tools, but it does not have a pump. It doesn't have water or anything on it. The objective would be to meld the roles of one of our engines, or, and the tank, and this ladder truck into one vehicle, so that we shrink our primary response fleet by one, thereby saving us, you know, upwards of $750,000 in future capital cost. This has kind of a snowballing and compounding effect, because it's something that will, will help us also with the station project, because it reduces the overall footprint that the building needs to be, because we're going to reduce it by at least a 35-foot vehicle. So, that's a significant amount of space, you know, when you think about it. So, it's also an exhaust system or exhaust remediation system that we don't have to, you know, an added component that we get to reduce costs that way. Possibly a bay door, we get to reduce costs that way. So, it has a compounding effect that can have a positive impact on our, you know, fiscal resources. All right. So this is down the road. These are vehicles that are, are not, you know, Engine One is not due for immediate replacement. It's something we have time to plan for. Engine One is a 2005 Emergency One rescue pumper. It remains in frontline service after 16 years. Again, it has, it's served the town well. Industry best practices for fleet management of emergency vehicles, schedule the use at a 200, 200,000-mile threshold or 20 years of frontline service, whichever comes first as a hard stop. Obviously, with the success of our maintenance program and the way, you know, our personnel have paid attention to detail in the way our DPW has worked, we're able to get more, more time out of our vehicles. You know, I, I think one of the things that we want to try to do is, is to plan and be on, not have vehicles be so many years beyond their service life, to make sure we're within, you know, close or earshot of the constraints of what the NFPA standards and recommendations are. Engine One's an important vehicle. That's our vehicle that responds first as motor, for motor vehicle accidents, or hazardous conditions, or hazardous materials responses, technical rescue incidents. This is also the engine. It has the full complement of the jaws of life, which we mentioned in the earlier slide. And we also have our stabilization struts and things of that nature for various types of technical rescue incidents, whether it be vehicle-related, structural-related, maybe a tree into a house. We have to stabilize a beam or something. We have struts on this vehicle to do those kinds of things as well. Also carries a lot of our hazardous materials, mitigation materials, from speedy dry to absorbent pads and booms, things of that The goal would be to try to have this scheduled for replacement in year 2025. That would be when this vehicle hits its 20 years of frontline service. It doesn't mean we have to get rid of it, but we can move it to reserve status. That is one luxury that we... That is one luxury that we currently don't have. We don't have any reserve vehicles. So, we're down an engine, we're down an engine. And, you know, that's something that we could, you know, alleviate an issue with potentially by, you know, cycling the apparatus through. One of the things that we do very well right now is with the smaller vehicles, for example, our squads, the chief car, even the ambulances, they're on a consistent cycle where they're going to run so many years as frontline and then as the second out unit, which gives them a nice life cycle where we're not hitting a huge capital bump all at one time, you know, with, with the vehicles. All right. So, discussing Engine Two. Engine Two is our primary workhorse. Engine Two will be the one that everybody sees probably the majority or most of the time. It goes to just about everything. It's usually first out on structure fires. It's gonna, it's also another ALS vehicle. This is our engine that is licensed as an ALS vehicle by OEMS, as well as our ambulances. And this is the unit we're looking to meld roles of. The reason you see the three vehicles on this slide is because we're trying to eliminate this extra vehicle. Right now, it's not an extra because we have, our ladder truck is what I like to call, it's not multi-dimensional. It's kind of got a specific use and it's limited in that use. Whereas if we have a Quint, it can be used as both an engine and a ladder truck, thereby eliminating the need to have two engines and a tanker. We can have an engine, a tanker and a Quint and still have the same capability and not lose any capability, not lose any ISO points. We'll still have the pumping capacity. We'll still have our water carrying capacity, but we'll reduce the fleet by one and save money in our capital improvement over time. All right. So, jaws of life, which we talked about. We do carry a full cache of rescue tools on Engine One. We carry a small tool on Engine Two and on Squad Two. So, when we say a small tool, we carry what we call a combi tool, which is a combination spreader cutter. It's just one piece. It's, and it's very effective for rapid extrication. And we have that for that reason. You know, if we do encounter a vehicle accident and we have to do a quick door pop and we need to get somebody out fast, we can do that. The other reason we have them on those vehicles is most time people think, conventional wisdom says this is for vehicle accidents. Well, we actually use these for means of egress and ingress on building fires, in red activations, things like that. These tools can also be used to secure us, a means of rescuing a citizen or making sure we have a means of egress and ingress for ourselves going into buildings, especially homes and buildings that may have fortified exits or large commercial exits and entry One of the things that we're seeing right now is, again, this, our, our hearse tools or our jaws of life have been very well maintained, well taken care of, but they are, we have sets that are over twenty years old and we have a set that's over fifteen, which is exceeding its NFPA recommended life. One of the things we'd like to do in helping to be safer and also more green friendly is to transition to battery powered tools or electro hydraulic tools where there is no hydraulic pump that is pumping hydraulic fluid through hoses. And when you connect and disconnect tools, you're losing fluid and things of that nature. So, going to the electro hydraulic, electro hydraulic tools, it's all self-contained. They're battery operated. You don't have to worry about hoses. And for me, hoses on the incident ground equal trip hazards, equal fall hazards. And when you can transition to a battery powered tool that's self-contained, you just grab it and go. There's no hoses, no trip hazards or things like that to worry about. The cost of replacing the jaws is about sixty-five thousand. That would give us a full new cache. And there may be some residual trade-in value. I've been trying to dig and look into that. I know there are really old tools. We have, won't have any, but maybe the ones that are just above fifteen may still have some residual value that we could get out of them. So, our life pack, our cardiac monitors, obviously, this is probably the most used tool in our department. You know, EMS being the lion's share of what we do, accounting for about fifty-five to sixty percent of our annual responses. Every time we go out and go out on an EMS run, we are going to have a patient hooked up to one of these devices. It gives us, it's a great assessment tool. It gives us a lot of data and information, allows us to see things that are going on that maybe even the patient doesn't understand and know how to verbalize what's going on with them. We can, you know, see what may be causing a patient's chest pain or we can see, you know, what may be causing their sense of anxiety or impending doom by seeing their, their blood oxygen levels. We can see their CO levels in their blood. We can check blood pressure. We can take pictures of their heart and do an EKG. So, these are very important devices. These are relatively expensive devices. We maintain and keep two. Obviously, we have two ALS ambulances. And the cost to replace these is estimated about eighty thousand dollars. You know, these are a very valuable asset and tool for us. And there's probably been many of citizen or visitor to the town of Norfolk who is, has a better quality of life walking around right now because of our use and of this tool and having the availability of these ALS tools.
And Chief, that would come out of the ambulance receipts that we receive for the runs that we do?
Yes.
That's covered, well, covered by that.
Absolutely. And that's another good thing. Right just before I started, Chief Pachuchik and Blithe worked on, you know, just making our, changing our ambulance rates, adjusting them to be more in line with the level of service that we're providing. And from that, we have seen an increase in the revenue that we're able to bring in, you know, as a department for the services that we render. So, that will allow us to be able to purchase things like this and offset these costs, these costs associated with providing the service. The automated CPR devices. So, the trade name for the ones we use or the ones that we prefer is called a Lucas I, I hope none of you have had the experience of having to do CPR on someone, but I can tell you from having to do that myself, these are, they are a game changer and invaluable. You know, there's a lot of things that, you know, you can look at trying to automate or look at trying to make safer. And one of the things about the Lucas is, is there's no human error there. Once you set it up, it gives a consistent, steady compression the whole time. It doesn't change because it doesn't get tired. You know, it doesn't change because it's dripping sweat and it, you know, in your eyes or whatever. So, it gives high quality chest compressions. Research and data have shown it increases the chances of good patient outcomes. And this has been a very invaluable tool for us as well. You know, we have a couple instances where we have some field saves, not only because of the training level and interventions of our personnel, but because of them being adequately equipped and properly equipped with adjuncts and devices such as this that allow them to perform and do their job at the absolute best level. The cost of this, they're about twenty thousand dollars per device. Again, we, we keep two. We have one on each ambulance so that we're able to have, you know, provide ALS, full ALS transport and capability to our citizens as much as possible. And the last one, the fire station project. Obviously, the fire station's fifty-five years old. And I think one of the things, it's exceeded its useful life. I think in, one of the things that I noticed right away when starting is the size and the lack of space, especially in the equipment bays. It lacks proper living quarter space for departmental personnel. And ideally, we'd like to replace it with a more modern structure that meets the town's needs and have it at the current location. I think that's one thing that is very advantageous about the current location is we are in almost a perfect dead center spot. We're able to get to all areas of town, even the most, even the most far reaches of town in a reasonable amount of time. This year, for example, our response time from notification of call to the first arriving unit, the average was five minutes and forty-one seconds, which is almost three minutes better than the national average or the gold standard of eight minutes. And for ALS intervention or an ambulance arriving on scene, we far exceed what the national average of standards are. And I think some of that can be attributed to the location of our building and obviously, you know, the situational awareness and the promptness of the personnel, you know, getting up and getting going. But again, I think the location is ideal. We just, just need to upgrade and create a little bit more space and make it more efficient and make it something that the community can be absolutely proud of. One of the good things is we have three point three million dollars remaining in funding from appropriation from the police and fire station project that was initiated in twenty sixteen. We will need some additional funding to complete the building, but we do definitely have, you know, money to get started and have a good start and foundation for, for what we, what we need. Is there any questions?
Well, first and foremost, Chief, let me just say thank you for the great presentation. It takes a special kind of person to come into a room and talk about three million dollars with the trucks and to have us walk away and say, wow, he's doing a lot to save us money. So, we, we do appreciate that and the consideration that you've given to the downstream impacts of some of these capital requests. So, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
I, I also want to express our appreciation to not only you, but the rest of the department for your, your patience and your accommodation as we tried to work through the specifics of how we're going to be able to deliver on the fire station. I know that we've really asked a lot of people to get really creative with some of the ways that you've been able to manage within the confines of the current station. But all that you've been doing throughout this point has been a fantastic partner and willing to do whatever it would take to be able to have this move forward in the right and appropriate way for the community. So, thank you so much to you and to everybody for doing that.
Very much.
I had a question about the monitors that you had identified for eighty thousand dollars. Is that for one or for two?
That's for two.
Two, thank you.
And same for the Lucas machines.
Yes, it's two. And there's one other, just point of emphasis that I forgot to make when I was discussing the apparatus. So, you know, some of those numbers may look, or they are high. They're, they're, they're big numbers. Well, one of the things that I, that I try to do everywhere I've ever been is I try to include replacing things like nozzles, hoses, axes, so that when we get a new apparatus, it's in essence turnkey. Now, there may be some things that we can recycle, but in essence, in the fire service, just about everything has a fifteen to twenty year shelf life. So, one of the things I don't want to do is have a brand new engine, but have a thirty year old nozzle on the attack line. You know, that, that just doesn't make good sense to have, you know, advanced technology capability and then you, you take away all of that advancement by putting an antiquated device on the end of a hose, for example. So, the reason, there is a, there is a cost that is included with those vehicles that, that brings in the minimum tool requirement that ISO will require, but modernized and, you know, that would be, so basically, when we bring an apparatus in, we're bringing it in and it's there for twenty years and then everything about it's ready to replace as opposed to piecemealing things together, you know, and trying to recycle, you know, whether it be hose or deck gun monitor, things like that. Yes, you can save four or five hundred dollars here or there, but my thought process behind that is you have a brand new truck. I don't want to put a twenty-five year old deck gun on it and then when we go to need it on a major fire, it seizes up or it doesn't work or it creates a problem. And then again, we take all of the technology and advancements that we, and the engineering that we're looking at and the new standards and we just take the truck right back to being twenty-five years old again. So, there is, there is some, there's some method to the madness, if you will, to make sure that not only do we have the new truck, but we don't want to just have a shell and no equipment to go in it that is, you know, modernized and in line with what it is. So, when I have these costs in here, these costs are intended to be turnkey and ready to go. So, when the truck is delivered, we don't have to wait six, eight months to put it in service. We get our training and we go.
There may be trade in value that we can realize. Some pieces are ripe for auction, some are not.
That was one of my questions was, what are we doing with the old ones? Can we trade them?
It depends on the situation.
Sell them.
Some of them, you know, ideally if we could sell them-
Party buses, change the colors.
So, we do have-
Lot to do in Norfolk.
I think for the, the tank, you know, if we get a grant, we can't turn around and sell that. We can't auction off, we can't sell it to another department. So, we couldn't say, for example, give it to an apparatus broker. But we could sell it to a product, you know, a tree company or a company that, you know, does pumps out basements, whatever, you know, those kind of things. And the engines, the two engines hold significant value right now. Obviously, they're later vintage vehicles. And right now, they would hold significant value. Obviously, the older they get, the less value they have. But, you know, I think there's definitely some trade in value for the two engines. The, the other two vehicles, where it becomes problematic is they are far past their intended service life. So, it's going to be difficult to get much out of them unless it's a private, you know, either collector or a private company that is not specifically involved in firefighting, for example.
And as well, we'll look at used vehicles ourselves. I mean, the Quint, the replacement for the ladder truck is, you know, it's a huge number. And it might be possible to find something that's got just a couple of years on it that's much more cost effective. It'll meet our needs for not twenty years, but you know, maybe fifteen. There was some giddiness from one of the offices. Someone found a fifty foot truck for very short money. Of course, it might take-
More garage then.
More garage.
Right.
Might take out the roundabouts and a couple of cars, you know.
At the back of it.
Not going to get up too many driveways easily. So, maybe not the good fit for us, but, but still.
The roundabout, like eighteen foot turns.
We're going to hit a lot of cars going around.
So, we had to let that one go. But all seriousness, you know, that's something, we've got to balance the timing and the need with the affordability.
Right.
You know, it's, it's-
Well, and if you can't get rid of, if Tank One you can't get rid of, then it can just be for the Norfolk days, for the SUDs and the field.
Yeah.
My only other, so that was my only question, my, my only observation. I don't know if I'm amplifying now. I don't like to amplify. Is that what I found interesting was if I was looking apropos of nothing, but I'm going to share it anyway. If I'm looking at the page that just has the, all of the four trucks' capital improvement, right? I look at that picture and I think, they look fine to me, right? Those are good looking vehicles. And then, and this is just sort of more of a BT dubs for town meetings and such, then I turn or we get escorted along to the before and after and you're like, ooh. Okay, I see it. Look at that with like the beefy front bumper and like this, you know.
Yeah.
That's, it's, it's very telling for whatever that's worth. I mean, I'm obviously not as well versed as on what goes on under the hood, but from a, from the outside. That's it. That's all I have.
I had a similar reaction, especially that the ladder truck looks, you could just see it's markedly improved. So, I echo what Coven said. Thank you for all that you're doing and thank you for putting this together. It is helpful to have zoom out and see that big picture. And I don't have any questions.
All right.
So, at our next meeting on the second, we're inviting the schools and Matt to come together to talk about school needs and facility needs at the same time. So, that's our next, next stars of the show next time.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, thank you very much again, Chief Kenny. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any Super Bowl predictions before you go?
Super Bowl predictions? Let's see. Ah, you know, I am thinking that Aaron Rodgers is on fire. As much as I want my draft class to make it, I really want Brady to make it. I just, man, that's a tall order to go into Green Bay and beat Rodgers. He is playing at an unbelievable level. So, I think it's going to be Green Bay and I don't mean to dash any Buffalo Bills dreams, but I just, if Patrick Mahomes is healthy, I don't see them beating Kansas City. So, I'm thinking it's going to be Kansas City versus Green Bay.
Who do you think's coming out?
Oh, that's a tough one. I'm going to go out on a limb and say Andy Reid will get his second Super Bowl ring.
Wow. Patrick Mahomes doesn't know what state he's in right now, but he's still going to win the Super Bowl. the Super Bowl. That's crazy.
Just rub some dirt on it, it's all good.
Well, we'll see if the two people on the Buccaneers who remember what snow looks like will be able to hold their own up in Green Bay. All right, Chief, thank you so much again. Our next item this evening is to please discuss the FY '21 budget and transfer station status reports. Blythe, go right ahead.
Yes, so three reports in your packet. First one is the detailed revenue report, broken down by all the categories, followed by a quick, a high-level overview of revenues and expenditures, and the last page is transfer station. And all in all, I'd say things are good at this point in the year. The revenues are about coming, they're about 48% of the budget so far, just on a strict percentage basis, without receiving the biggest source of funds in the second half of the year is excise taxes. Those bills don't go out until, for a couple of weeks, so we don't see that revenue until later in the year. But overall, tax collection receipts are at, are 4% above where they were last year. Overall, local receipts are 9% ahead. I think the significant, significant ones to point out there are in miscellaneous, we budgeted $25,000, right now it's almost 312. That's almost all due to the foreclosure auction that we had earlier this year. Some things are behind that you might expect, meals tax is down because of the hit to restaurants, investment income is down overall. But another one that's really doing very well, and I don't think anyone predicted, was licenses and permits. We've brought in, I think about 92% of what we budgeted for building permits. I think when I sat in meetings about a year, you know, a little less than a year ago, people thought, nobody's going to be doing anything, when in fact, you know, and this is Norfolk, it's not necessarily indicative of what's happening in the rest of the state or the country, but for us, it's, it's been good. And all of our state grants are on track that, that come in overall. And then zooming out to the bigger picture, revenues versus expenses, expenses are, are under budget, we're at 46% through December 31st. There's some departments that are spending right on track and some like in my office, you know, we haven't, I haven't been able to go to the $30 managers meeting and other sorts of things and, and we're underspent. So overall, we're to the good by about $775,000 and, and don't have any reasons to suspect that there's going to be a difference in the second half of the year. The only thing is I brought up earlier, not sure what the next wave of COVID relief means and how, you know, I, at the very least, I'm hopeful for funds to keep up with our costs for PPE for, for emergency responders and nursing services and, you know, and things that schools need. But hopefully that's, you know, selfishly for Norfolk, it's coming from another source. So that's an over, quick overview of that. And then turning to the transfer station side, I think equally, things are, are going You might have picked up that the revenue on this report slightly differs what's on the other page and that's because on this one, we've included bag sales, but the revenue that hasn't actually been recorded in the accounting system yet. So at halfway, budgeted 250, brought in 134. And don't forget that decal sales are, always happen in May. So we brought in 81,000 last year. So let's just say the 27 that we've brought in this year is going to go up to 81, those numbers will get much better. And on the expense side, because we had a change of personnel largely, our overall expenses are down. So it looks like we're, you know, making some, moving closer towards, from where we were. I'm not going to sit here and suggest we're going to cover our costs yet, but I think the major moves we made last year are starting to bear some fruit and, you know, see where we are at the end of the year as to, you know, I wouldn't suggest a, a change again this year after such a significant one, but I think the picture is a little better. So that's, that's kind of my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Blythe. First, let me say how incredibly helpful this look into the revenue comparison is as a brief check-in every now and again. It's a fantastic view into, you know, actualizing how we're performing to where we thought we would be at this time.
Yep.
And as we go through all these discussions about looking forward and talking about state funding and all these different components of what make up our revenue base, it's great to, you know, have this to fall back on to identify.
Sure.
How that piece is coming along. That being said, do we have a structured schedule in which we bring this before the board? Do we do this quarterly? Do we do this once every two months? Do we have anything like that or is this kind of just a check-in every now and again?
I'd suggest we do it quarterly. I think more often than that is not necessarily as impactful.
Yep.
To see, see a trend.
Beautiful.
Plus I'm also balancing the workload of finance because it takes a bit of time to take that and put it into this. I, I first, first got this version, I said, oh, no, no, I'm not going to get away with my life if I don't get on this version. And you, you did exactly what I thought you would.
Yep.
So, yes, I can definitely ask Todd to do that. So we'll give it to you in, you know, mid-April for, for the end of March.
That would be great, thank you. Just my other note on the transfer station, I think you made a good point in identifying that the changes that we made are starting to at least point us in a direction where we can see what the impact is going to be long-term.
Yep.
If we were to review this again in not next quarter, but third quarter, that's when we'd be able to identify what a full year of changes looks like and be able to have a discussion about if we want to make any operational changes in the future.
We really need to wait to year end because of those bags. If the decal sales aren't till May, that's in the fourth quarter.
Okay.
So, you know, so if they bring that in, you know, where it was, I mean, we did increase those, those, those charges and, you know, I think you'll see, you'll see a significant increase there. Whether or not we see a slight decrease in bag charge, uh, bag sales in the future when people go back to work and are not at home as much, that may be an adjustment. But the, we'd also see lower costs for getting rid of trash that we pay. So I think we have to let the whole year go through and really look at that in, over the summer.
Okay.
And the fall. I, I said to the staff, I said, you know, you really need to show us how you broke down the 250,000 revenue and they put 32,000 down, 500 for sales of materials, they brought in 4,600. I said, really? We're going to get to 32,000? That's a lot of compost and wood chips. But, you know, we're, that's the first time I would ask them to actually categorize it, so we're going to have to learn from this year and then adjust going forward.
Perfect, thank you, Blythe. Any, any questions or comments?
No, just for levity, I thought that license and permits was up 92.88% with all the pandemic pets. Everybody has.
Yeah, unfortunately, we still only get the.
I thought it was weapons license.
$10. It's, it's really building permits.
Your brain's at.
That was just my first, like, oh my God, all the pandemic pets, so. No, this looks great and it's helpful to me to have a big picture, so thank you.
You're welcome. Do you see any questions or comments?
Yeah, I actually do have one or two. So I look at the, the first of the three pages and it has the 2020 estimate, the actual mid-year and then the actual final and then the delta between the estimates. And I know, and it's lucky that Chief is here because maybe he has the answer, perhaps Town Administrator does, that ambulance estimated is 410 and then the actual mid-year is 205 and then the actual total is 410, which to the penny balances out, which seems spooky. So I'm assuming that's a, that there's some sort of an accounting practice that I'm not aware of that are, they're backing the number in, right?
So that's, so we bring in more than that, but what we had actually budgeted for revenue from ambulance receipts or appropriation to the general fund was 410 and then 470. So we're simply.
So if you've got a delta, so if you've got an overage, you're not reporting that here?
Yes, that's correct because, for instance, the, the debt for the ambulances that we have is paid for directly out of this fund, it doesn't even come into the general fund.
I see.
What we do is we, we use 470,000 of what we get to help balance the overall cost of running the fire department. And we made a conscious decision from 20 to 21 based on revenue, you know, coming in to say the, the ambulance fund can afford to pay the general fund 470 rather than 410, which helps cover the cost of, of the staff and the.
No, that makes sense, I'm not challenging that, I just note that, you know, if you look at it here, so then from that can I assume that the only line item that was successful enough to draw in more, that its budget would have been ambulance? Like, or are there other cases? Well, because there are other cases where it's, the difference is in the black. So.
That's, that's.
This is the only one where you're, the carve-off is, is on another.
The only other one is charges, services for water and sewer. So we have some employees who's, who are split between general fund and water and sewer. So the water enterprise fund is paying the general fund its share of the health insurance of, say, two people.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever that is.
So that makes sense. And then the other thing, I also assume then for the 2021, that it's just, you know, everything seems to be sort of where, like, again, there's all, the projected are all, are they just, are you, right, it's all zeros again, so.
He just didn't do the difference column, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I can ask him to make sure.
No, I don't need it necessarily, but I mean, I'm, just, it's too late for me to do math, so I was like, oh, wow, that looks weird that they're all.
So a decision point in putting the budget together next year is can the ambulance receipts fund afford to subsidize the general fund a little more than it has? You know, is, are the, are the receipts consistent enough to do that and is it appropriate that, you know, we cover a larger part of the fire department expense with that? You know, we, we have, one of the engines is, you know, is, is certified ALS vehicle. Should we think about, you know, making that different? We don't want to go up too high and leave the fund, you know, high and dry when we need the next ambulance, but the same token, is there some room here to help the overall picture? And that's part of what we think about when we put the revenue budget together.
Makes sense.
Great question.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll open it up to anybody who is in attendance this evening. If you have any questions or comments related to our current agenda item or viewing the current status of revenue in transfer station, please use the raise hand function at this time. I am seeing no hands and so we will move on to our next item. Thank you, Blythe. Our next item is to please discuss any website posting of board correspondence. I do not believe that we've gotten anything new unless I am mistaken.
I have not seen any salty writings.
I know, they were pretty bad.
Not lately, I haven't, I haven't gotten any of that.
Just the ones, the.
Did I repress it? It happens. Considering I'm a divorce lawyer, I get salty writings.
Yeah, I think I might have been desensitized as well.
Pretty fairly.
When did we receive this one and what was in reference to? High-level subject.
This is like now I'm interested.
Yeah, now I'm like.
Hold on.
This was the, the heated one about, that questioned our atheism or our.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
I made a friend in Ipswich because of that.
They reply back to you?
I met, yeah.
No.
She's, and, you know, just saying, she was also a vice chair of select board there and she's a, she's a therapist, so can do a little referral work, so.
She didn't reach out because she thought that it was professionally her obligation, right?
No, she just thought it was a great email, my response.
Oh, that's good.
Right after, you're like, do you know you hit reply all? I'm like, yes, I know I hit reply all, I always know when I hit reply all.
For reference, we typically get large distribution emails that are sent out to all select board members across the state or in some cases across the region that typically touch on a range of different, sometimes wild topics that are typically just put to the side. Now, this one was particularly egregious and.
Particularly.
Just got my Irish up. I hadn't had the coffee yet and I was like.
Not directed just at Norfolk.
No.
No, 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 this is directed to just about everybody in the state. There was a lot.
I, I can't count, can't count me in, I didn't know what you're talking about.
No, 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 no. It was.
But I don't believe that that one would reach the point of having interest in the community.
No, that would just.
Oh, no. Well, I also wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to give that person any kind of.
No, no more platform.
Which is the point of why they do it, right? Yeah.
Well, you know, and also so that we know things like, you know, like remember Raiders of the Lost Ark when they're like, don't look at it, keep your eyes closed? That's essentially like, I feel like some people I think legit think that that's what they're helping and the rest are just cuckoos who are like, I mean, they're all cuckoo, but nevertheless.
Yeah.
This guy was next level cuckoo.
Yeah, it was, that's the truth.
So aside from, from that little ray of sunshine, we didn't have any other correspondence that we need to discuss posting today. Very good. Next, we have our town administrator updates. Go right ahead, Blythe.
Just a couple of things. One of the things we're working on, we had an unsolicited proposal from a, a group looking to develop a solar array on Pond Street and interested in leasing land around our water tank to put a solar array. So we're, we're tracking that down, seems like it might be a very possible idea and because that land is owned by the water department and water fund, any revenue would accrue to that, so it, it comes in, it would simply be an offset to the overall cost of running the water system and, and to rate payers. So it would, if it's a lease, it would require town meeting approval. So we're just talking it through, thinking about it, trying to figure out if there's something we should do and then doing it so that we can perhaps enter into agreement and like I said, just offset the cost of what people have to pay for. So looking at that. Just a, a moment on budget process, I am, we are in the midst of budget, we had a, we started our meeting to get, morning today together, we're ending the day together, having other department meetings. Our goal, my goal is to get you the same budget book updated this year around the beating of February. The reason I say around is the state budget doesn't come out until late January, but that's obviously a really important data point. So around that time and then looking for some feedback from you about whether you want a certain amount of time to review it, whether you want to have, discuss it at a, at a meeting, how you'd like to just do that whole process this year, a little different maybe than And two other items, I think, did, did you all get an email from Judith about timing for the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, I was supposed to respond to that.
Yeah, we've got three possibilities for executive sessions, we've got a grievance from a union to hear that's, that they, that don't, don't accept my answer to the grievance, they want to appeal it to the board to, to review from Public Works. We want to talk with you about parameters for negotiations for two unions and then we've got some minutes to approve, another executive session reason. And then lastly, you probably noticed the street signs weren't on this agenda for tonight simply because we have reached out, we've had conversations with the DOT, but they haven't been willing to put on paper a response about their, their thoughts on this. So we're trying to get that?
No, no.
So our goal is to have something for you for the next meeting and, or take it up one way or the other. So that's what's, that's the only reason it's not on your agenda tonight.
You know, and an interesting aside, and I didn't have the answer, but somebody said to me, they were like, oh, talking about it, and I was embarrassed that it hadn't occurred to me. You know, about the cost of the new signs, and someone said, well, why in some cases can't you just put the new retro reflective lettering on the existing white PVC? Right, like if you decided, God forbid, you could have a vertical as opposed to a horizontal sign and all this other stuff, why, and it didn't even occur to me to ask, right? Like part of the whole cost was, oh, you got a new piece of wood, you got to get a new piece of PVC. And sure, if someone has like careened into it, but if it's perfectly functional, other than it's not, it has lost its retro reflectivity and perhaps it's not high enough for the MPH for that area, so you could boost it up and it just never, it did, now, maybe it's not possible, but isn't that like the most common sense question? And it did not occur to me, be like, hey, you're already charged 50 bucks an hour to dig a hole in the ground. Instead, if you took an X-acto and scraped off the old and slapped on some new, what would that, never. So it'll be fun for having, be fun conversation next time.
Yep.
So we did review just getting the retro reflective strips and putting them on, but we didn't talk about the lettering.
Right.
Yeah, gotcha.
So anyway, that's where that's at, in case anyone was burning to know the answer.
Burning.
No. Not even like a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blythe. I assume that on the, the budget, you'll be reaching out individually, inter-in-between meetings to discuss expectations or ideas or would be added as a discussion item next meeting. In relation to the scheduling aspect, I think the question before us right now is if we're all available around 6:00 PM for our next meeting, is that right?
Which date, is that the second? Is that the date that we need to know, it's early?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Probably put it now, so.
Thank you.
Napping or something.
Uh, does anybody have any other questions or comments related to Blythe's Town Administrator updates? No, no? Very good. I'll open it up to anybody who was in attendance this evening. If you have any questions related to Blythe's Town Administrator updates, please use the raise hand function at this time.
Is there anybody actually?
Is anybody in attendance?
There is.
There is.
Is there a way for us to know that there's?
There you go.
Well, I mean, I know there. Like, you've had to do some, like, active, but is there like a-
And are the roadies, that's Donna, right?
That is.
Um, you know, roadies has so many different connotations.
Yes.
Those are road tendrins, the road attendant, the beautiful-
As opposed to people who follow the band.
Our dedicated fans that travel from town hall to town hall, yeah.
Or road sodas, but that dates me. Well, I mean, I guess, you know, Bobby Shannon and, and Ed Haddad are, are, um, okay, all right.
It appears that Mr. Her Dad does wanna take the opportunity to raise the hand, so, go right ahead, sir.
Why not, right?
I can't see you, though.
Ju- ju- just a comment that, a- a- as a listener, I, I'm finding a lot of the conversation tonight is very difficult to understand because of the masks. I know that's not anybody's fault, but just, I don't know if, if anything can be done about speaking with maybe masks raised when someone is speaking into the microphone. It was just very difficult to hear all the conversation tonight. A lot of it is muffled and, um, hard to understand.
And is it a certain individual, or is it generally everybody?
You're trying to signal me out.
Was saying me out.
No, no, everybody. I think-
Everybody, okay.
Some people are clearer than others, but I, I think in general, it's just, it's, it's difficult, and you know, and I know there's a small audience tonight, but if you had a lot, a larger audience, it would be even probably worse. I don't know. Just a, just a comment.
You're probably all watching on YouTube.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Ed. I, I think that you've seen each of us tonight, uh, instinctively push our microphones back at some point. Uh, they were probably set up exactly where they needed to be.
I'm hearing it here, so I'm assuming that what, you know, I'm saying, sitting back here, is as easy as if I sat right there and said it.
Right. Yeah, because the, the in-house is very clear.
But Ed, can, when, when she speaks right into the microphone, is it easier?
I, I, actually, I heard Blythe clearer of all people, and Kevin, maybe because they speak a, a little bit louder, I don't know.
I was wondering if maybe Blythe's mask was easier for people to understand stuff through the paper.
Yeah.
Like, if maybe I tried a different mask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, when the chief was speaking, I, I missed almost all of his conversation. He was very difficult to understand.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do some more sound tests, Ed. Thank you for the heads up.
Just a comment, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands up at this time, so we'll be moving on to our next item, which is to approve some warrants.
What, um, before I forget, what, I know we said we were doing executive session earlier. What, is it five or six, or five forty-five, like?
I'd say five forty-five to me.
And why are my years twenty-five sixty-four? Five forty-five?
Please.
Good thing you asked. Six. Thank you. Uh, okay, so we have three war- warrants that we're approving tonight. I would move that the board approve three warrants for the December thirteenth, twenty-twenty, to January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. And last but not least, we have the approval of some minutes. Please take it away, Anita.
I'll try to use my teacher voice. I move that the board vote to approve the minutes of the December fifteenth, twenty-twenty, and the January fifth, twenty-twenty-one regular meetings.
Second.
Hearing a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, well, that does it for our agenda this evening. I'll go around one more time, see if anybody has any parting thoughts before we adjourn. Anita?
No.
No? CC?
No.
Chief K, since she stuck with us?
I know, God bless you.
I have none. Thank you for, for the opportunities here.
Thank you, sir. Blythe?
I'm good.
Very good. All right, well, our next meeting, as you heard before, will be on February second at seven PM for the open meeting. And, uh, we will see everybody then. Have a fantastic evening.
Thank you.
Good night.